All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Drew, those at home, those in the audience. I appreciate you giving the opportunity to speak today and go over some of what's to come in 2021 for the Police Department. So about a month or so ago, Joe did a team building exercise with department heads, and it gave us an opportunity to really brainstorm on some of the challenges we've seen in 2020, as well as some of all the different things that could happen and how those different things would impact operations and revenues and Duck, anything from earthquakes to hurricanes to pandemics and anything in between. And towards the end of the discussion, really began to think about what, what makes Duck Duck? What sets it apart? Why are we here? And what struck me most and popped into my mind is that from incorporation through every challenge that this town has conquered since that time, our residents, our leaders, our staff, and our stakeholders have never waited around for somebody else to determine the town's destinies or solve the town's problems. We've always hit them head-on from everything, from buying the property where the food line was going to go to stop that, to solving the flooding problems that we've seen. On a day like today, I think Chief Black can agree, we'd probably be standing in the road pumping water for days on end like we used to do back in the beginning. So we've come a long way, and it's impressive what the town has accomplished in that time. And that's very much, that's our community that's done that, and especially council as our leaders. So when I was sworn in last year, Chief Black presented me with a book called Our Iceberg Is Melting. Great book. Be glad to loan it to anybody. I came in with a solid plan. Spent a lot of time leading up to my appointment as chief, presenting that plan, the things that I wanted to accomplish, goals and objectives. But this book that Chief Black gave me, I don't think she had any idea how powerful it was going to be for me, especially for us as a town dealing with some very difficult challenges during that time, and us as staff members as well. But it did provide a roadmap, and I'll explain how that benefited the department and the town in just a second. But I also want to take the time to thank you, Chief Black. Without a doubt, public safety has the strongest relationship it's had in the 18 years I've been here. We've been able to work together collaboratively on a lot of different things for the betterment of the town, and I appreciate your, your support on that. That's been invaluable to me. So some of what the core of this book, while it, it talks about a bunch of penguins that are trying to decide how to, to save their iceberg from melting and where their new home's going to go. But in doing that, they created an eight-step process for successful change, and it really started with creating a sense of urgency. And that's what I had to do on day one when I came in. There were things that we needed to change. There were things that we had been working on collaboratively as a department for years that we absolutely needed to see, see through and get done. I had one of the most unique opportunities that a police chief can have. In my first month, I was able to pull together my entire command staff from scratch. That's, that's unheard of. Most chiefs would come in and inherit a staff. So I was able to pull together an amazing team in Lieutenant Clark and my two sergeants, Knight and Garrett. So together, we really sat down, we spent a lot of time talking, going over things, talking about problems and solutions, and we developed the vision and the strategy to get us where we needed to go. We have an incredible staff, and we're able to communicate with them constantly. So we began our journey together with a staff meeting where we all sat down and very, very clearly and very carefully laid out what my vision for the department was and my strategy to get us where we needed to go. And in doing that, it created buy-in from the officers, which was absolutely imperative to get where we, where I wanted to be. I empowered them to act. Come to me. Tell me what they saw as inefficiencies, what they thought we could do better, where we could make improvements, and we've done that as a team over the last seven, eight months. We produced some incredible short-term wins in that last eight months in getting, and, and the, the most incredible win to me is we were able to turn around four vacancies, to fill them with absolutely incredible employees that, that are not just warm bodies, something I swore that we'd never do here in Duck. We have a group of officers now that absolutely believes what Duck is about. They believe our model. They believe our brand, and they're committed to getting us there. And then the last two, really not letting up. We have not let up for a second since we began this journey and, and have no intention of letting up going forward. We've certainly had some stumbling blocks. We've had some difficulties, but it has not stopped us, and it will not. And in, in the end, in a short time, we really have created a new culture in how we're going to do things and move forward. So I'm very proud of that. And so again, thank you, Chief Black. That, that book and that strategy really did help to provide a roadmap for me. So I want to tell you another little story. A few weeks ago, I'm on the way to work, and I live in Nagset, so I've got to commute through several communities to get to work. And I get to an intersection at a stoplight, and I look over to my left, and there's a, a person I'm very familiar with. In fact, my nurse at my doctor's office, who I've known for many years, and her window's down, and she's banning herself. It's 40 degrees out, so something wasn't right with this situation. She didn't acknowledge me. As soon as the light turned green, she immediately motioned me to the side of the road. I pulled over, learned that she was, she was suffering a medical emergency. So I immediately got on the radio, called for medical assistance. Within minutes, fire truck with four firefighters arrived. Directly behind that, Dare County ambulance arrived with actually four medics onboard. They must have had some, some trainees on there with them. And then one of their quick response vehicles pulled in right after that with two on it. They immediately tended to her, her knees, loaded her in the ambulance, and quickly transported her to the hospital. My point behind this is I was standing there essentially as a citizen. There was never a police response. Not one police officer checked on me. Not one police officer showed up to that scene. I was left with her vehicle sitting on the side of the road. I needed to secure it. I needed to get in touch with her husband, who I know well, who works here in Duck, to tell him where his wife was headed. No help with that whatsoever. And that, to me, spoke volumes about that kind of police department. I later went back just out of curiosity to see, well, maybe they were busy doing something. Not one of the officers working that morning was busy. And I'm not saying they should have come to me because I was the police chief, but if, if the roles were reversed and an officer riding through Duck stopped and called in a medical emergency, we would have all gone to them to see what was going on and what we could do. But no one was there to help us. So unfortunately, that's what a reactive police department looks like. It's a response only to citizen complaints when they're actually asked to come to the scene, only responding to criminal matters and having no time whatsoever to problem solve anything else, very limited focus on crime deterrents, minimal community engagement and management, who is simply driven by numbers. I know that's not the police department I have any interest in ever working for, and I know that's not the police department that you want for our town. So the opposite of that is a proactive police department. And you have to look no further than what we've built here in the town in the last 18 years to see what that looks like. We've got a department where our officers respond to 100% of the calls. That's every police call, every fire call, every EMS call, SURF rescue, and Town Matters. If somebody has trouble with a pothole, they call us, sign down, they call us, we deal with it. We focus on self-initiating our responses instead of, based on our officers' observations, rather than waiting for our citizens to call us to deal with something. Our officers are empowered to solve problems. Just the other day, we got an email from a citizen, said the stop sign was down in their town. The first reaction most police officers would be, that's, that's not my problem, that's Public Works, or that's planning or zoning. No, we, we deal with that. We solve that problem. We have a heavy focus on having our police presence in the neighborhoods, our business areas, and on our roads. I know that Sandy, you joked the other day with Missy, that now you don't know when the supervisors are out, because under Chief Kudo's leadership, we put omnipresence in place. And now you don't know how many of us are out there, because we all look the same. And that's what we want to achieve. We've got an extremely high commitment to our community, and we are engaged in it. We, as a police department, we take a community, or a team, rather, approach to policing to get things done, realizing that one, two, or three working on a problem solves it quicker and more efficiently, actually more efficiently. As management, we're supportive. We're focused on success rather than numbers. And yesterday, Rob asked me a great question walking in, why didn't we charge somebody with a crime when we absolutely could have? And I had some time to reflect more on that after the fact. And I think the primary reason is, our goal is to solve a problem. While sometimes it's the easy solution, maybe to discharge somebody and let the courts figure it out. That model is shifting. The courts more and more are dismissing cases where they think they should have been handled at the community level. So we're not focused on numbers. Another example for you is traffic tickets. We stop speeding, but most of the folks that are coming through our communities are transient folks that are here for a week. It does little good for us to write somebody a $300 speeding ticket to remind them to not speed, but it, writing them a warning ticket has the exact same effect. They've been warned of, of the, not to do what they're doing, and by standing on the side of the road with blue lights going, 100, 200 cars have passed in the time it took the officers to write that warning ticket, and that in effect has slowed, slowed traffic down and slowed 200 other people down. So as I was telling Drew the other day, Governor's Highway Safety Program doesn't much care for us because we don't write tickets. They're numbers-driven. The only figures they want to see are citations that are written, and that's never going to be us. We want to achieve, and, we want to achieve an outcome without focusing on some defined action to get it done. And then a result of this, proactive police department has positive police officers that are focused on success, not warm bodies. As we were, as a command team talking about, again, what makes Duck Duck, Joe Knight said it best. He said, "Our community knows us by name, and that's what we're trying to achieve. We want our citizens to run into us at coffee shops, at restaurants, out on the street, and be able to say, 'Hey, Jeff, I had a problem the other day,' or 'Hey, Joe,' or 'Hey, Missy.' That's really important to us, and that's the kind of community we're trying to build." Another thing that, that just amazed me, the amount of letters and comments we get from people about the service we provide is always positive. But we got a letter from the Deputy Commissioner of the Baltimore City Police Department a couple of months back, and it was a, a comment on a case that Officer Knockin had handled for the family. Unfortunately, it was the death of, of their mother. And he just, the commissioner wasn't even here, but his brother relayed to him just what the officers did for the family, how Justin stayed there with them, made sure that they had all their arrangements made, made sure that every need they had was taken care of. And he just commented how much greater of a level of service we were providing than frankly, what I took from it is even what they can provide in the city, given, obviously, they have greater responsibilities and are a lot busier. But it, it told me that we're running the kind of police department that we want to run. So we entered into the risk management review process with the League of Municipalities, and I've already told you a lot about that, so I'm not going to go too deeply into that. But I want to talk a little bit about how it shifted our focus and our processes as a management team. We're really focused on rewriting the policy manual to the standards that are required through the league, but doing it in a way that it's based on foreseeability. So many, so many policies are based on what happened yesterday. What's important is tomorrow, day after that, and thinking about what might be five years from now. So that's really helped. Our internal training requirements have absolutely been reevaluated. We've added things that frankly, we never thought of as a police department in the past that were important. One primary example of that is driver training. Most police officers, they get driver training and basic law enforcement training, and that's it. They may go to pursuit training at the Highway Patrol at some point, but driver training is just as important, learning about what's causing the, the bulk of the accidents out there, which oddly enough, or not oddly enough, but surprising, they're the backing into things. That's officer's worst nightmare. But we need to talk about these things. We need to remind officers of the things they shouldn't be doing, what they should be focusing on to make sure that we're operating safely out there. We've also put all of our supervisors through a block of courses mandated by the league, which are management and supervising, supervisory courses. Those cover everything from EEOC to sexual harassment, down to, to all the high liability issues that supervisor might face. And we do that so they can be armed with the information to make sure that they don't make the mistakes, or that they handle these things properly, to make sure we're not put in a, in a risk position. And then lastly, we implemented an early warning system that allows us to analyze our high liability incidents, our internal affairs investigations, outside complaints and officer injuries. And we do that twofold. If we've got an officer that's a problem, we want to find that out, and we want to deal with it before it becomes an issue. And it also allows us to monitor officers' mental health. That's, that's probably one of the biggest things that's on my mind out there, just based on what officers have to go through during their career. So as I was getting a chance to meet Drew the other day, he actually asked me this very question at the end of our conversation, and, and I referred to this slide that I'd already prepared. He said, "What keeps you up at night as a chief?" After he told me that a town manager's two biggest problems are the police department and land management. So that was comforting, but I appreciated him knowing. I wanted to know why Chief Black wasn't in that. In any case, kind of ranked in order here, officer safety and wellbeing is always at the top of my list. And I'm going to talk about each thing, each of these things a little more in depth as we go forward. But the investigative function of the department, our records management capabilities, our administrative support, and then of course, officer retention. So kind of get right into officer safety. The bottom line is, we've been operating with single officer coverage for a long time. And as I go, as I go through here, we'll talk about kind of where we, where we started, where we are now. But it just isn't safe for us to continue to do that. A lot of police calls, from traffic stops to very routine calls for service, can instantly become life-threatening situations in seconds. And when there's only one officer working, the outcome generally is going to be bad for the officer and the public. And that's something we definitely need to work to correct. A lot of folks comment to me a lot, you know, "Duck's a safe place. You know, it must be great working there. Nothing bad ever happens in Duck." And, you know, well, most of that's true. We're, we're all here because Duck's a safe place. It's where we want to be. Unfortunately, we're not immune to crime here. And while, what I generally tell people is, it's not a matter of if we'll see that, it's a matter of when. Our frequency of, of, of high liability or, or high newsworthy incidents is much less frequent, but it doesn't mean it hasn't happened and won't continue to happen in the future. But interestingly enough, when you look at the data from 2019 on officers that were assaulted in the line of duty, the number one call they were handling when they were assaulted was disturbance calls. And that's probably one of our most common calls here. A lot of times, it starts out as maybe a, a civil dispute between a shopkeeper and a customer, or somebody that's arrived at a rental company to check in and finds out that they were scammed, and that maybe they don't even have a house to rent. They've already driven 12 hours to get here. They're already amped up from domestic violence calls, which we've certainly seen a rise over the last year in. So it's not the, the, the really newsworthy calls that you hear where officers are getting hurt. It's, it's going to the more mundane calls that tend to, to turn bad on a dime, if you will. So just to talk about our shift coverage over 2020, and of course, we, we faced some difficulties in 2020, which I'll, I'll certainly acknowledge and get into. But if you look at 2020, we worked 730 12-hour patrol shifts during that year. So in 2020, 726 of the shifts, or 44%, were covered by a single officer working. That is just, to me, that does absolutely keep me up at night, because it terrifies me that something's going to happen to one of these officers while they're out there by themselves. So I put a chart here for those of you in the room to see, and then also those tuning in by Zoom, the same charts on your screen. So we went back to 2020. We looked at our schedule, looked through everything, and found that where these vacancies occurred, and we've done our best to try and show that on this visual aid here, but any of the red dots indicate a day where we did not have the shifts covered with two officers around the clock. And of course, the green is, is the opposite. So our goal is to turn the entire board green. And I hope that we can do that over the next year and come back to this a year from now and be able to tell a very different story about where we are. So just to kind of explain how our scheduling works and, and what an individual officer is able to do, under FSLA, our officers work 171 hours during any 28-day pay cycle, and there's 13 pay cycles in a year. So this equals 14 12-hour shifts per, per pay cycle per officer. And of course, just to give you a refresher on how our, our officers are scheduled, we have two squads that work completely opposite of one another. So each squad is staffed by a sergeant and four police officers. When Squad A is working, Squad B is off. So without accounting for any time off for any reason, the maximum number of shifts an officer can work without going into overtime would be 182 shifts in a year. When we start taking away things that take an officer off the street, such as training or sickness, and some of the other things I'm going to discuss in the next slide, on average, an officer works about 150 shifts a year where they're actually on the street working. So to achieve two, two officer around-the-clock coverage, we would need to work 1,460 shifts a year. With the eight patrol officers that we have now, each working an average of that 150 shifts, roughly, we're unable to cover 216 of the shifts needed to ensure that two officer around-the-clock coverage. So what are some of the barriers that continue to cause headaches for us? Every officer here has dedicated vacation time that they earn, that they like to take. We try our hardest to encourage officers to take that time in the off-season as much as they can. One thing that does make that harder for us is, I actually argue that our job is harder in the off-season than it is, is in-season, because we've got thousands of vacant homes here that are, is a very target-rich environment. Fortunately, through our, our LPR system, we've been able to put a giant dent in property crime, and I hope that continues. But the other thing is, we try to get a lot of our mandatory training done in the off-season. So now you have officers going to training, taking vacation, all within that same timeframe. Illness is always an issue, and, and this year, it's been complicated by COVID. If somebody's thought they might have had it, early on, they were told 14 days, you're out. So that, that was a huge problem for us. Fortunately, now we can do rapid testing, and we know pretty quickly, so it hasn't been as much of an issue. Employee injuries have seemed to be a, a constant issue. Chief Kudo used to tell me all the time, "I worked here five years, and I've never had full staff." And really, it was because in every one of those years, we had some type of workplace injury that kept somebody out for a period of time. Training is absolutely a, a schedule killer, and as we continue down the, the road of, of modernizing policing, the training function is going to continue to grow, to the point of more and more training is going to be required every year for us to do what we need to do. Of course, court appearances, grand jury testimony, and then turnover, as we've seen this year with the four officers out. So just to give you a kind of idea on what, what schedule impacts will be, so we've got an officer out now on maternity leave. That was 42 shifts that they're out for the year, given that they can only work 150 a year on average. So you're losing a third of their time to that maternity leave. So no sooner do I get an officer back from maternity leave here next week, I've got another one planning to go out in March. So it, it'll span almost six months where I've had officers out on maternity leave. The newest officers we've hired all came from out of state and are required to attend 200 hours of basic law enforcement training to achieve their certification. That would be great if it was 200 hours straight, because at least I could account for that. But unfortunately, it's, it's, the classes they need to take may account for 24 hours this week, 40 hours next week, eight hours the week after that, and maybe we skip two weeks. So it's all over the place. Makes it extremely difficult to schedule, because if they're on night shift, and the class they've got to attend is only held from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, it completely throws a monkey in the wrench for their scheduling. So an officer who takes two weeks of vacation generally needs to take seven shifts off, and then officers that have had workplace or workers' comp injuries, we've had some that were gone for almost the entirety of a year. So those are very, some of those are unknowns, but a lot of this stuff is becoming more and more common for us to see. This is supposed to portray Lieutenant Clark, because this is generally how I see her on scheduling day, sitting at her desk, trying to figure out just what, how she's going to make this work. That's one thing I don't, don't mind having shifted to her. Sorry, Missy. So I just want to talk about a particularly difficult week that we just faced here a couple weeks back, and, and kind of what made it difficult. But sadly, it's becoming not that uncommon for us to see a week like this. So we had one officer out on their 12 weeks of maternity leave. We had two of our newest officers that had just been released from field training and BLT training. We had the, the newest hire was still in field training, so he was riding with somebody. Five of our officers had to, to get their TASIS certification done. They were, we had put it off as long as we possibly could. One supervisor was off for a, a family vacation that they'd long had scheduled, and then five officers had to somehow shift their schedules around to get here to get some vehicle maintenance done on their cars, which was some updates to their vehicle cages in their cars, which is really important to get accomplished. And then lastly, we had a departmental staff meeting. And some would say, "Well, I didn't just get rid of the staff meeting." Well, one of the commitments I made to the officers is, if we scheduled something months in advance, which we do, I would not ever cancel that on them at the last minute, because that used to happen all the time, and it was a morale killer. So we try to have our staff meetings, like clockwork, every two months. We have the officers come in. We have a good staff meeting. We talk through things, and then we always share a meal together before we end. So those are very important, because again, those two squads work opposite of one another. They don't get to see each other. So these staff meetings sometimes are at training, are the only times they get to talk, and we can collaborate on things. So I want to talk about the foundation that we built, and I'd say "we." The, the foundation that's been built frankly was the vision of Chief Kudo. He came in with great vision about where we needed to get to, and past council and current council helped us get that foundation built. But we've still got to finish the walls. And what it gave us is, we finally had a recognized organizational structure, first time in 18 years. We had supervisory oversight to ensure our risk management was being sought. We had more efficient scheduling than we'd ever seen. We had two officers working a shift at the same time for the first time ever, and we were able to distribute the administrative workload. So in a five-year period, some really heavy lifting was accomplished, but we hadn't quite got there yet. A lot of the questions I get are, "Why, Jeff, why don't you just put a sergeant in to cover that shift if an officer's out?" And there's very good reason for that. If I, just to give you an example, if I took a sergeant who's working, would work a, a 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM shift normally, if I moved that sergeant into a night shift tonight, one, I don't, now I don't have a supervisor covering, covering the, the day, and that supervisor now needs to sleep 12 hours tomorrow before they can come back to work. So it disrupts their schedule for the following day as well. So it's not that easy. And it also, what I want you to think about with the Police Department, I know I've thrown a lot of analogies at you, and I'm sorry for that, but to me, the Police Department operates like an assembly line. And if you think about an auto line or any manufacturing line, every level of the hierarchy or station on that line is dependent on the person before them or after. If, if somebody doesn't get the wheels to the line in the order they're supposed to be there for them to be put on, then the efficiency of the entire assembly line comes to a halt, and things don't run efficiently. So if an employee, as I say, if I remove an employee that's serving a core function and I move them over to something else, there's always going to be something that suffers as a result of that. And that's what I tried not to do in order to preserve the, again, risk management is a big, big thing for us. So first station on the line, of course, is the patrol officer. They're the absolute backbone of everything we do. If we didn't have the stellar police officers that we have working patrol, nothing else would matter. would matter. The second station is investigations in any police department. And I'll be very honest with you that this is an area where we fall short on. When Becky Viesley interviewed me to talk about the study that she's putting on, she said, "I've asked a couple of your officers, you know, how do you handle investigations? And they've told me you don't have an investigator." And I said, "Yeah, Becky, that's correct." And she said, "Well, that's not the norm anywhere. Explain to me how you're doing this." So basically, what we've done since we began, the focus was always on trying to get patrol covered. So the officers were tasked with performing their own investigations from start to finish. With the exception of major crimes or something, then we'd be able to call in additional resources or help, or supervisors would help fill the gap there. But that works very well for a simple crime. But if you take into... Put in your mind, you respond to a B and E at 10:00 in the morning on your shift. The officer does everything they can do right up to 6:00 when they go home. And then they may be off for three days following that. So it's very difficult for a night shift officer to come in and pick up that investigation where they've left off, or by the time the officer comes back, things have gone cold. You know, it just... Frankly, we're not doing a good job of it. We're giving insufficient attention to the investigation post-preliminary investigation, and that has got to change. We are... We do have a huge lack of dedicated investigative personnel, and I'll show you in a parity slide how we compare to our other regional agencies here. And then another huge investigative challenge that we have is the antiquated records management software we have in place now. And that was put in place in 2006, and it hasn't changed much since then. So it lacks a lot of functionality that modern record management systems have. The number-one issue being, it doesn't give us the ability to share information or receive information from agencies around the county. So Station 3, of course, another vital step on the assembly line here is our two sergeants. They're squad supervisors, they're leaders, they supervise, direct, motivate, and evaluate their assigned officers. It's their job to make sure that officers are operating under the law and in compliance with the policies and procedures we put in place. They are the primary... Their primary goal is risk management, and they really are vital to the agency in terms of protecting us from that liability. Station 4 is Lieutenant Clark, and I could never sum up everything she does in that position, because I've been in that position, and I know what it feels like sometime, like you're a ping-pong ball bouncing around. But essentially, she supervises the day-to-day operations of the department, which includes the departmental training function. She assures that everybody's trained in the established rules, policies, procedures. She serves as our evidence custodian and our quartermaster, which, just that in itself, trying to keep 12 people in uniforms, you wouldn't imagine how difficult it is, especially when you start running into shortages all over the state of different items and different things that you need to find. She develops the duty schedule, thus the head-in-the-keyboard slide, and she handles all our procurement, and again, so much more. She truly is my right hand, probably left hand. I follow in next at Station 5, so it's essentially my job to plan, coordinate, evaluate all of our operations. I've got to ensure that we're operating under optimum performance, effectiveness, and efficiency. I develop all our department policies and procedures, ensure that we're in compliance with the law, best practices, and the goals of Town Management and Youth Council. Prepare requests and implement our annual budget, direct the development/maintenance of all our technology, keep the Town Manager and Council apprised of what's going on, and I maintain liaison with other elected officials, Town Department heads, other law enforcement officials around the state and around the county, as well as our community, our business representatives, and all the publics on what... Public, rather, on what's going on with the department. We try to do that in the most transparent way that we can. And lastly is Nicole. And I don't say that... Probably Nicole ought to be Station 1. She really is vital to everything we do. She's our shared administrative assistant with Fire. She is really the face of the department. She interacts with the public. Pre-COVID, she was the one greeting everybody at the door. She answers most of our general email and provides administrative support, helps with projects, and serves as our IT coordinator, which in itself can be a huge time-consuming job to do. And she's also our DCIA Terminal Access Coordinator for the whole office. 20 hours just isn't enough, though. We've... As it's been talked about a number of times today, the town has just experienced great growth over the last 10 years especially, and we've done a phenomenal job at getting these projects through, keeping up with... Continuing to make things great. But the people part of it really has fallen behind and lagged, and I think you heard some of that from Joe this morning as well. But we really need a full-time administrative assistant at some point. And I'm not coming to you asking for that right now. I know that there'd be an impact on Chief Black if we were to simply sever that right now. So it's simply something I want to put on the radar for us to discuss going forward. But the job of administrative assistant really is important. Every year, there's more and more record-keeping that needs to be done, more and more reporting requirements for different things, data entry. You know, there's a lot of antiquated systems in the state that require somebody to physically go in and enter things every day. For instance, with every traffic stop we make, the officer has to fill out a very comprehensive form, which is really an anti-bias form. All of that information has to be hand-typed into the state's website, and it's extremely time-consuming. Right now, through the e-citation program offered to the state, they've, in their wisdom, they allow us to download all the citations written. There's no download capability for warning tickets, so every one of them has to be hand-typed in. It's a huge time consumer. Right now, just with our department, our side, she's overseeing 20 departmental computers. And with all the technology we've implemented, we've made great efficiencies out on the street. There's a huge oversight piece that has to go on behind the scenes with that technology to make sure it's running right, updated, replaced, fixed. So it's vital that we have somebody dedicated to that. And then there really is a need for increased administrative support to the command staff. Just the sheer number of policies we're editing right now, you know, Lieutenant Clark is great about reading through them, helping me get through that, but we always need another set of eyes to help with the administrative editing on those types of things, and then getting it over to a website like Christian displayed earlier. Also need somebody that can work on special projects, research, and some of the state reporting requirements. And then lastly, analytics, something we desperately need to improve upon, but it's data in, data out. If we don't have the systems in place where that data exists, all the greatest analytic tools in the world aren't going to drawl out that data we need. So just to look at some parity with our neighbors, DUC and Manio are really the two agencies in the county that are operating with a minimum on-duty staffing of one. The difference between us and Manio is they have their county sheriff's office surrounding them. Their entire headquarters is there. It's very rare that they would have to respond to a call solo over there just because of their geography. You'll also see across it, we're the only agency that's not operating at least a full-time investigator or some type of investigative oversight. Southern Shores has dedicated... They have three sergeants, and one of their sergeants, half of their time is dedicated solely to investigations. And then Manio has done essentially what I'm going to propose to do. They've taken two officers, one on each of their squads, and they've tasked them with not only being patrol officer, but also being the investigative or detective for their particular squad. We're also the only agency that's operating with less than one full-time administrative assistant. As you'll see, Kitty Hawk's operating with two, and they're not far behind us as far as their personnel. So mutual aid comes out a lot, and I just mentioned it with Manio, and how they're fortunate in their geography to have agencies right around them there. So I just want to kind of lay out what the differences would be for mutual aid from the Fire Service versus the Police Department. We both rely heavily on mutual aid for things, but we utilize it in a different way. So I'm going to kind of walk you through two calls, one Fire, one Police, and I... Forgive me, it may be a little extreme, but I just want to draw the example. So if Chief Black's department was dispatched to the smell of smoke in a town hall... Sorry, Drew, I couldn't help myself. So response to the smell of smoke in a residence, they would immediately put a predetermined response plan into effect. Sometimes, layperson like me would refer to that as a first alarm or a second alarm response. And basically, what that says is, okay, this is a possible structure fire, so we feel like at a minimum, we need resources for... What would a first alarm be, Chief Black? That would be... So four agencies responding to this. And what's unique about the Fire Service is, when the dispatch goes out, it goes out simultaneously to all of those resources at one time. So while that first engine with hopefully four firefighters rolls to it, they're hearing on the radio as they respond, what else is coming? What resources? How many personnel? And they're thinking through that, how they're going to address this scene based on that. So that first engine arrives, and they determine, this isn't a smell of smoke, this is a house fire. So each one of the crew members on the chief's first-arriving engine, they each have a very specific task to perform, and they know exactly what it is. And it's all in preparation for additional resources to come to show up, to determine what type of fire attack Chief Black wants to put together. So when I... You know, obviously, there's no fire department that could maintain every single piece of equipment that you'd like to have. So of course, she relies on other agencies to have some of that equipment and to bring it, just as we do as police officers. We certainly couldn't have every possible little thing. One example of that, as Drew and I were talking, we really have no need for a K-9 officer. But there are times when we'll absolutely rely on Killable Hills or Nag's Head to bring to us a K-9 to use under mutual aid. So just to take you in a little opposite direction, we've got a police officer working alone, 2:00 a.m. in the morning, they're working up in Sanderling, they see a vehicle come by, maybe they suspect this is an intoxicated driver. The officer stops the vehicle. And again, forgive me, this may be a little extreme, not trying to scare anybody, but unfortunately, this is happening. Officers alone stops the vehicle, the driver and the passenger get out of the vehicle and begin walking towards the officer. The officer immediately gets on their radio, calls for mutual aid assistance. That kind of starts a chain working at that point. So let's assume that the closest Southern Shores officer is somewhere around their station, which is probably where you'd find them most that time of the morning. That's nine miles away from that officer's location. And then let's assume that Currituck is near their station, which generally, they are north of there because they patrol all the way out to Carova. That's 11 miles away. And to further complicate it, Currituck operates on a completely different radio system than Dare County. So that officer, in order to call direct, would have to get out their radio, change multiple zones to make that call. So they've got to wait for Dare Central Communications to get on the telephone, to Currituck Communications to tell them there's a DUC officer that needs help. They then have to make that radio call to that Currituck deputy, and then they're on their way to us. So that in itself probably would exceed three minutes. So what does mutual aid not provide for us? It doesn't give us immediate backup for officers handling life-threatening situations. It doesn't give us any guarantee of a response or a timeframe of that response. The available mutual aid resources are based solely on the personnel working. So if we needed mutual aid at 11:00 p.m. on a July 8th, when everybody in the beach is at their absolute peak, the likelihood is everyone else is tending to call us well. So it'd be very difficult for them to send us resources. Even if they were to, there's still a response time lag. Some of those units that would come from the south of us, they don't have familiarity with DUC, our landmarks, our streets, so there could be an issue finding the officer. And a lot of times, those response times for mutual aid can exceed 10 minutes, which is the first three minutes of any police incident, critical incident, are the most critical. That's where it's going to make or break, whether that officer survives or the public is injured as well. So mutual aid is great for when you have a large-scale incident and you need all hands on deck. We can get them there within 20 minutes or 30 minutes to help us. But when you need somebody right now, mutual aid is not the tool that gives that to us. So where's the problem? What's the problem? I simply don't have the patrol officers needed to provide two officer around-the-clock So my request, of course, is to add two positions in this coming budget year. So what would this solve? It would create two flexibly scheduled, we call them floater patrol officer positions, with one assigned to each of the two squads. Those officers would have a primary function of filling in any spots that were left vacant in the schedule, because the regularly scheduled officer was out doing any number of those things I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. Their ancillary duties would be to handle the investigative function for us. So they would serve as investigators on their particular squads. I want to be clear that that's a Band-Aid approach to investigations. It's not... It doesn't fix the problem, but it will buy us some time, and it will allow us to improve our investigative response. By adding those two officers, I believe that the two officer around-the-clock coverage problem would finally be solved, and I would not anticipate coming back to council at any time in the near or distant future to request additional patrol officers. And by doing the... Creating the floater position and then the investigative position, it essentially fills two vital departmental needs and solves the current problem at hand. So our prostructure would look like this. If you'll see towards the bottom, there's the two newest officers that would add. So it would put five patrol officers on each squad, each supervised by a sergeant. And again, I believe that finishes out the vision that we've set out to accomplish over the last five years, once and for all, and puts the walls up on that house that we've begun to build, if you will. So I get a question often from a number of people, and it's very valid. What are you going to do with these two officers on the off-season? And my plan is to keep them busy year-round, and I don't believe I'll have any issue whatsoever doing that. As I mentioned earlier, we try to schedule our training and time off in the off-season as much as possible. So I feel like during the winter months or the fall months, their time is mostly going to be dedicated to working shifts to ensure that two officer coverage around the clock is achieved. But in-season, our call volume obviously begins to go up. Shift coverage can be less of an issue. These new positions are really... That's when they're going to be needed the most to handle assist with criminal investigations and that added call volume. So kind of like our patrol strategy changes through the seasons, these two officers' functions would change as well. So it all comes down to money. I understand that. If there was unlimited funds, we could achieve everything we ever wanted to. But in this case, essentially, taking the average salaries that we've hired the four newest officers at, that equates to roughly $139,000 a year. We would need to add two additional Axon licenses. That would provide those new officers with their tasers, body cameras, and in-car cameras. And then we'd have to address the issue of patrol vehicles, which I'll talk a little bit more going forward. There are other costs. I call them indirect costs associated with adding officers. The bulk of that really comes down to one-time equipment purchases. That would be firearms, duty gear, uniforms, things of that nature. We're ahead in a number of ways in our current fiscal year budget, and I believe that we can absorb any indirect costs in this fiscal year that would be associated to the officers being added next year. So we'd be able to purchase all that equipment ahead of time in anticipation of getting those officers started in July. On top of that, I don't anticipate having to ask council or Drew for any additional line item increases directly related to the addition of two additional officers. So I believe our current training budget, our current other lines, our fuel budget, everything, we would easily absorb those additional two officers without having to make additional requests. So just looking at fiscal year 2021 versus fiscal year 22, because we've had a number of changes to salaries and fringe benefits or staffing this year, the actual net increase to add two additional positions next year would be just shy of 7% at $75,000. And the fixed charges... And the fixed charges would go up by 17%, which adds those additional Axon licenses. Some other proposals that I'm making to cut some things out of the budget would be to eliminate the non-sworn community resource officer position. That's the part-time summer position that we've had over the last few years. While we've seen some value in that, as things have shifted, our policing model has shifted. It has not worked out as well as we think it, it could have. And we believe that the police officers, especially if we add two, can easily absorb any of the function that, that community CRO did. In fact, we found that most of the time the CRO was spending assisting with events. I also would propose to decrease overtime budget by at least 35%. So that, that would restore some money down. So bottom line, the direct costs associated with adding two patrol positions in July would be roughly $62,000 in fiscal year 22 over 21. And I want to be clear, I'm not trying to hide the total cost of, of what's there. I told you it's $140,000 in salaries. I'm just giving you a comparison over where we are this year versus next year based on, on the changes we've had in salaries and fringe benefits across the board. So budget priorities, one of the things I believe that council had asked was for me to be clear about what my budget priorities are for the coming fiscal year. At the top of the list, absolutely is to fund those two additional police officer positions. Hands down, that's our number one goal. Purchasing the replacement vehicles that we've proposed and the new vehicles for those officers would come in second. Our AED program, which I'll talk about a little more is, is, it's fairly inexpensive in the grand scheme of things and would have a great added benefit. The radio replacement project. And then I've listed Public Safety Building as fifth on the list. I want to be clear that, that we, while I think we need a new facility, new building, we're, we're operating out of a closet. There is no building or piece of equipment that'll take the place for those two officers. And that absolutely is my priority. We'll work out of a tent if that's what you need us to work out of to make that happen. I, I want to work with that planning process, but we as a police department are completely open to whatever, whatever comes as far as, as where we're housed. Just to kind of look at our 2021 budget, where we are. We are ahead with salary wages and fringe benefits. We have additional part-time salary that would have been dedicated to that CRO position for the month of, for tail end of May and then into June. Overtime, we are way ahead on. And I'll kind of explain this without going into one of my last slides. There's been a huge shift in, in the way police officers look at overtime. Where in the past, when, when I started out, that was, that was the bread and butter. I wanted all the overtime I could get. That model has drastically shifted. These officers want to be home, they want the time off. And not saying money's not important to them, but they, they want that family time. We've got a number of younger officers with young children and they really value that time home versus that overtime. So it actually has been extremely difficult in some cases to get them to, to come in and work some overtime to help fill some gaps. Travel, obviously, we haven't gone anywhere this year. So we're virtually untouched in our travel and training budget. And then vehicle supplies and materials, which the bulk of that represents our fuel costs. Fuel has been quite low over the last few months, so that's helped us. I, I think that's going to begin to rise, but I think we're still in good position. We've been hit the hardest with uniforms, equipment and advertising. And all three of those things are directly related to the officers, the turnover that we had. While we do see the bulk of reimbursement for ballistic vests we buy, we have to encumber that money and buy them. And in some cases, as Joe was saying with FEMA, it can take the DOJ better part of a year sometimes for us to see the reimbursement for them on, on that. So all that time, we have to front that money, which is thousands of dollars out of our uniform budget to do that. And then obviously buying the equipment and supplies needed. And then we had to do quite a bit of advertising, which the only advertising we budgeted for was our mandatory notices for property disposal. So going forward, while it was horrible on the investment front, listening to the financial presentation yesterday, there's a plus side to that. And that's the fact that, that borrowing can be done at historically low rates right now. And that may allow us to leverage that to get some things done that we otherwise would have to phase out or, or push out. Just to give you an idea of where we are as for current debt service on vehicles, we took out a loan in 2019 that purchased three patrol vehicles. It was the same loan also used to buy the command vehicles for fire. Police portion of that is 158,521. We were able to secure that loan at just over 2%. And we made the first annual payment of that this year. Traditionally, we've always deferred the first payment out to the following fiscal year, following the purchase, which has allowed us to ensure that we never had more than two loans out at any given time for vehicles. Before I get into this next slide, just want to give a little bit of a background on vehicle logistics, how we, we do this. So we, after the budget is passed, July 1, generally we place our order with a dealer. We use, we look at state contract pricing and then we look at contract pricing offered through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, which over the last few years has had much better pricing than the state. So we've been able to order those vehicles. It generally takes till sometime in November when we see those vehicles come into the dealer. That is completely dependent. COVID, COVID made it completely unpredictable. And in last year, we, we ended up being months behind because of it. But generally it'd be about November. We would then transport it to our upfitter in Newport News. It generally takes them a month to two to finish the upfitting and deliver us a fully outfitted and functional police car. So generally that July 1 purchase equates to a patrol vehicle being delivered sometime in mid-January. For this year, that would present some logistical challenges. Obviously for the three 2016 vehicles that are scheduled to be replaced, there's no issue with that. Those vehicles on current contract are 33-8. Our upfitting cost is, is $12,600. Now that we have a uniform fleet, for the first time, we were able to approach the upfitter and ask what equipment could we move from the older cars into the new cars? Because in the past, we'd have to move to a completely different model and very little fit. We were happy to learn now that this year, there's going to be some equipment that's going to move over and stay. So we expect some cost savings there. And then we would need to purchase one radar unit as, as a part of that purchase. The two vehicles that would essentially be for the new positions present a bit of a challenge because if the positions are approved and they start July 1, we obviously can't wait till January for a vehicle to come in. So we've got a couple of options there. Fleet vehicles or the police interceptor vehicles are generally only ordered by dealers extra in white. Because they, they keep, the most common police vehicle is white. And when there's accidents, they generally can replace them with that. There are no silver ones to be found anywhere. So what we would propose, kind of two options. One would be to go with civilian model explorers. In appearance, outward appearance, they're identical to the, to the other ones. Generally would be available through dealers. And as we saw on the Silverado we purchased last year, we were able to see unbelievable bid assistance offered by Chevrolet on that vehicle to be able to get it at less than contract pricing. The other option would be to order two vehicles sooner in order for them to come in later. If the positions didn't end up being filled, those two vehicles could be put towards two of the three that, or three that are slated to be replaced. If we did off-the-lock pricing, we believe that upfitting and vehicle costs would not exceed 42-6. And then we would need to purchase a mobile data terminal and a mobile router and antenna for each of those vehicles to equip them as, as the rest of ours are equipped, excuse me. All right, 800 megahertz replacement project. This is really a great example of how police and fire have been able to come together on something and look for some efficiencies. Deputy Chief Bachellet is by far the radio expert. And so I'm going to let him at some point come up and explain to you a lot more about this. But just to go over some of the, some of the benefits of adding this project all at once and using debt service to fund it. It would give us radios with a 10-plus year lifespan, ensures operability because all equipment would be standardized, allows for some quantity discounts on the equipment, which will, in our estimation, would easily pay for any finance charges that were, were levied as part of this. And that's because of historically low interest rates. In, in kind of asking around, the lenders don't see it'd be uncommon for us to see a rate under one and a half percent for a three-year, three-year loan on those. It will also give us, as Joe mentioned yesterday, known in level costs over, over three fiscal years versus the phasing end of radios, costs can always go up suddenly, models may be discontinued. So it's very hard to predict pricing out for multiple years in these phased projects. And then it would also allow the town to dispose of the outdated equipment while it still has some market value. Well, it'll have zero value in the state of North Carolina because of the mandate that's come through our system. That's not a national thing. So that equipment may have some value to departments in other states. And we'd be able to recoup some of that money as part of it. And again, I'll let Trey, I'll let Trey be the expert on that. But I just wanted to mention, based on some of the comments yesterday, just wanted to make it clear that we're end users in the radio system. Our, our, our part in this is simply the, the radio, the talk piece. Dare County maintains, owns and operates the infrastructure behind the radio system. So we have very little input on, on that side of things. But again, Trey will give you a much better analogy and explanation. Just to briefly talk about our external defibrillation, external defibrillator replacement project? Project, sorry, can't get my words out today. We right now have three different AED models in operation. Most of those were purchased very early on in the department. They're no longer supported by the manufacturer and they're, they're just outdated. So this project would replace all of the current AEDs with the exact same model AED that's currently used by the fire department. With the one caveat to that, they carry, some of their AEDs actually has a, a heart monitor screen on it where they're able to monitor heart rhythm. They're trained at a much higher level than police officers are. So we wouldn't get that feature, but it would allow us to use the same batteries, same pads. So it would, in essence, we wouldn't have to carry our own inventory and they wouldn't have to carry their own. We can, we can share and find some cost savings there as well. And then Phillips had offered us just an incredible buyback on all of our current equipment that offsets the, the total purchase. I believe it's as much as $10,000. So that was a credible opportunity to be able to do that. Just have a few more slides and then I'll certainly entertain any questions you might have. Just talk about some officer retention challenges in a changing world. As I said earlier, there's been a huge shift with officers from the live to work, work to live model, or yeah, work to live model. Cost of living on the Outer Banks continues to rise, especially housing. We got really tough news about a month ago that Joe Knight, our only remaining police officer that lived in the town of Duck, his landlord called him out of the blue and said she was selling the house. It immediately sent him into a scramble trying to find a place to rent. When he couldn't find anything to rent, he immediately tried to find something to buy. That proved nearly impossible to find anything. It was only through at the 11th hour, his landlord called him back this week and said she had decided not to sell the house and she gave him another year's lease. But that would have been devastating for us to lose that last officer in town. And then it definitely is a concern on my radar where these, where future folks are going to live. It's just getting really, really expensive out there. The number one reason we've seen officers come from out of state and leave the Outer Banks is unable to find their spouses good paying jobs here. So that's, that has shifted a lot. Some of the new officers we've hired all have wives that work from home, which has allowed them to, to come here and, and not have that concern. But that is a concern that, that every department down here has had. It also concerns me that a lot of newer officers, they're not in the profession to stay to retirement. You know, I came in, you, you came in, you did your 30 years and you got out. We're seeing officers that get to the eight, 10-year point and they decide they want to do something else and they walk away from their retirement. So it's a, it's a conundrum that we're all trying to, to deal with and, and how to, to maybe better those retirement benefits or change them in a way that might enhance or convince officers to stay. And then Duck's not a fast-paced environment. So, you know, a lot of the people that are out there looking for jobs, the few that are, they want something busier than Duck. And again, our, our no warm body policy means that we don't hire those kind of people. We hire somebody who wants to come to Duck because they believe in what we do and they believe in our community. And we've been really fortunate to be able to find officers like that. So just to talk about some of my strategies to deal with retention and, and keep these guys here. It's been most important for me to create an environment where they thrive. That's been challenging for me because as hard as it is to admit, in the, in the grand scheme of things, I'm becoming a dinosaur in the police world. You know, I, I never would have believed that. But so I've had to shift my thinking as it relates to a much younger officer, different generational differences and how they see things and how they communicate. But fortunately, we've been able to do that and, and it's working for us. We focus heavily on their work-life balance, make sure officers know that they're critical members of our team. I've put together a revised career development program that I hope to pitch to Drew here in the coming months. We're ensuring our officers can pursue the advanced level training that they have an interest in. That's allowed them to kind of become trainers, if you will, in that, that particular training and bring it back to officers. So we can send one officer to get something rather than 12. Like to, I certainly maintaining an open communication policy. We meet regularly, as I'd mentioned, and we solicit feedback continuously from our officers. We've accepted, I have accepted criticism in a number of cases where I made decisions that, that, that didn't work out. And I've been more than willing to do that and accept that and realize that if something's not working, it needs to change or be re-improved. I'd like to see us seek a higher education tuition reimbursement program to incentivize higher education with our officers. Like to continue to find tools and technology that make an officer's job more efficient and ensure our work environment remains healthy and inclusive. And lastly, continue monitoring the mental health of our police personnel constantly. One of the, the things that's being talked about now is officers undergoing psychological evaluations either annually or semi-annually. Not to draw out some kind of problem, but to make sure that they're okay. Realize some of the horrific things officers, even in the smallest communities, see, deal with and hear. That mental health piece is really important. So I'd like to see us get ahead of that and offer that kind of evaluation well before it's mandated through state or federal government. 2021, where we're going from here, going to continue our commitment to the 21st century policing model. We've changed all our policies. We're absolutely in line with this and have now achieved officially state certification in our use of force policy. Going to continue the league's risk review. That's probably going to take on the next three or four months to get it done. We're a little bit behind just because of some of the other things that have arisen this year. We're going to continue to review our technology to make sure it's working as we intended it to work and make changes as needed. Going to continue the exploration of new technology, software and systems and processes that'll create efficiencies and operational improvements. I'm really, Chief Webster at Nag's at night had several great conversations about a county-wide record system that we'd all be able to share data on. And I think both of us had kind of got to the point where we didn't think it was ever going to happen. And then out of the blue, we got a invitation from the sheriff's office from March. They are looking to go to a whole new program to operate the communications center, which would open some possibilities to an add-on records management system that all towns would be able to buy into. So if you saw in the CIP, a standalone server and program could exceed $75,000 to $100,000. Being able to do something on a cost-sharing basis like this may dramatically decrease the cost for each individual agency and give us a much more robust system. So I'm excited to, to see where that goes. And then also in, in that same note, I'm committed to finding areas where we can collaborate on things and realizing that each officer doesn't need to, to maintain their own mousetrap, if you will. We, we could share resources. We can do things in a, in a much more efficient, effective way. So lastly, what, what lies ahead for us? I think at some point, we're going to have to talk about a full-time investigator. Again, I think this approach that I'm proposing for this year is going to help bridge the gap for now. I'd like to have further discussion around a full-time administrative assistant. I'm interested to see what Becky Viesley comes back, comes back with. As she and I talked about, the issues that exist there are not the person. Three different people have held that same job and all three people have had some of the same challenges. So. So it'll be interesting to see what she recommends. The additional town infrastructure, as Joe talked about well this morning, it's required that we continually change our strategies, remain forward-thinking about how we're going to patrol these things. Even the added boardwalk section that we'll see with the brick grant definitely presents some challenges, getting officers out there who will have over a mile of boardwalk at that point. So that's something that absolutely has to be patrolled and maintained. And then lastly, we are, I am very focused on what's coming through state and federal mandates. I'm concerned with unfunded mandates coming down. But in a lot of cases, I think that we understand and accept that policing is changing and it needs to change. And kind of going back to my first slide of how Duck has never waited for somebody else to tell it how to do things or to solve a problem, I want to be ahead of this. We know where the changes are, and we're able to make a lot of them administratively here without waiting to be told by the state or federal government what we should be doing. So I'm going to leave you with the faces of your police department. As I said earlier, no amount of equipment, buildings, or anything takes the place of the 12 people that come to work week after week doing what they love to do. They do it with a smile, and they absolutely embody our mission of providing the highest possible level of law enforcement service to our town's residents, property owners, and visitors in order to keep Duck a safe place for all to live in and visit. So on behalf of them, I'm proud to have the opportunity to lead them and be your police chief, and I'll certainly take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jeff, very comprehensive. Are there any state or federal programs coming down that would give any assistance, any kind of grants? I remember a couple of years ago, remember they were funding police over four years, and it was a kind of a step program? Are you aware of anything that might be coming down from the state or the federal?
Supposedly, the COPS grant is generally where those come from. We haven't seen any funding for it, or the funding that has come down has been targeted to certain agencies that meet certain criteria. It's very difficult with our crime numbers to compete in competitive grants like that. But I think if we had an opportunity to display some of what we can offer from a community policing standpoint, especially with where the focus seems to be going with policing, I think we'd have a great shot at that. So yeah, the short, long answer is, it is absolutely on my radar, and I get the emails from cops constantly, and I'm hoping for the day where solicitation pops up that fits
Questions for Jeff, Monica's the other one. Monica, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you so much. Great presentation, really enjoyed getting that thorough overview. Couple quick questions, I'll just ask them all, and then, you know, I was curious, the building of the department is something that the town has been looking at over the years, certainly under Chief Kido. And I guess I just wanted to get an understanding of how this plan that you're presenting differs from the previous police chief's vision, just to see what the difference is. I don't, I mean, I think what you're suggesting here of putting the two officers in to sort of, you know, back up the squad structure is, you know, is, I get what you're trying to do, and I guess I just wanted to understand how that might have differed from the previous plan that we were working toward. And then also, would these two new patrol officers, you know, have the same status and rank as a regular patrol person, or because they would be investigating, would it be a different rank? And finally, I would not be in favor of adjusting the vehicle look, because I think you've been working really hard towards getting the vehicles, you know, to be uniform. So that, to me, was not a great solution if, in fact, we do get these police officers funded. So I just wanted to throw all that out there while I had the floor.
Thank you, Monica, great question. So start with the first one. Chief Kido and I worked hand-in-hand on that, you know, fulfilling his vision, and I absolutely share the exact vision that he had on that. So the only difference between the proposal Chief Kido made last year and mine this year is the added investigative function of those two new officers. We would have used them in the exact same way, other than that one added piece. So that just, it really doesn't change the substance of the request, it just adds an ancillary duty. And I did have a chance to talk with Becky Viesley about that, and she offered to, and I accepted. She is going to write or present a draft job description for that added responsibility. She, off the bat, said that she needed to add some differences to the police officer job description based on that added investigative role that they've been undertaking. But she felt that, you know, as far as rank, I don't see any difference in rank, you know, there's still going to be police patrol positions. I think their job description would just be written a little differently as far as that extra investigative piece, but no real difference, and we're not adding additional sergeants or anything like that. And then as far as the vehicles, I agree with you 100%. We worked really hard to create that omnipresence, and I think it's important for us to have a completely unified fleet that's marked the same, utilized the same. Drew and I got a chance to talk about that the other day. I certainly have no issue whatsoever in driving the same patrol car that my youngest officer drives. I think it's important for our community. So there's definitely some ways we could address that through some kind of some creative ordering to make sure it gets in in time to unify the fleet, but that's something we can certainly talk about going forward.
Thank you.
Jeff, the risk management review that Becky Viesley's doing, is that, that's not completed yet, right?
The league review?
Right.
No, sir.
Was there any? What's that, Joe?
Through Becky Viesley, that's a separate consultant provided directly from the league.
So that's a whole separate thing, but that's not complete?
No, so that's-
One from the league I'm talking about.
Right, that's not complete. It's a phased project. So the first phase of it is a complete rewrite of the policy book, and they've basically given us, given me guidelines. Each policy has to meet certain standards, and I have to go back, revise all the policies to ensure every standard is met. The entire policy book then goes to the league for first review. They come back to us with anything that they feel like we need to bone up on or improve to address any risks. At that point, they come out and do site visits for that next step. And kind of where this is going or where we envision it, we intend to complete that process, and we hope, the state has launched an accreditation process that will be through the state rather than Kalia, that's in its infancy, but we hope that we'll be, by completing the risk review, basically set up to immediately go into the accreditation and achieve that. So it's, the short answer is, it's not done yet. We hope to have the first policy book to them by sometime in March is my hope.
So they've not recommended anything yet, they're still working on that?
Correct. Well, other than, they came back and told me, they gave me the criteria, said, this is what you need to, this is what you need to amend in your policies to make sure you're covering all these things. So that's what we're working on.
And that one's actually run by the league, by risk management versus Becky, who is a separate contractor, just a vendor from the league.
Yeah, so Matthew Sales is the contact person, who, he's a former police chief, and he runs that risk review division. So it, kind of to give you a background on it, they formulated a committee, and I believe it's 14 chiefs got together, they wrote the standards that needed to be seen to address risk, and that's where this program goes. It's ensuring that you have met all those criteria. The benefit for the town is having a solid policy book, and then also, it's a significant decrease in cost for insurance, liability insurance for the town after completion of
Any additional comments or questions for Chief? They're being done, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.